Okay guys, we'll move into the next step. I'd like everyone to identify on your table an unused copy of one of the texts that was prepared with this extra copies, right? Take it and start tearing it apart, an act of religious lack of respect, and use the back side of the page for each one of you to take five minutes to write what have you learned from this exercise? Because we'll get one voice, there's thirty voices in this room, all of which I want to give a space for. I'd like everyone to write, what have you learned by way of the model, the example? What have you learned by way of the capacity to be inspired by another tradition? What have you learned about the intuitive relevance of genius as a category? And try to write out your own personal synthesis of main points that you gained from last night, from Monday if you were here, from today. So that you have a kind of crystallization of where you are in relationship to it all. In that summary, it will allow us to review what you gained from it. It will also allow our conversation between now and midnight to be more focused.
Um, so could I ask you? When, um, when our teachings come down, but also the other thing that came across as common threads to all religions were expressed, the light, the love, the desire to sit in God's lap. All those things were in order, the yesterday's text we were working on. And a splendid group, nine students came, some straight from work, and they worked for, I said, three quarters of that, but we did an hour and a half in the end, working on humility and going beyond words. And that was really beneficial for us to see the different faces. We weren't, funny enough, humility didn't have one, a text, a Jewish text, did it?
But you know that...
But we never... So I suppose a Jewish text. So, but, um, and the Hindu one was on bananas, so it was very down-to-earth stuff, and we enjoyed it very much. The Thomas Merton, I followed it up again, and then I'm reading this, so I'm going to read it with my fat chin. But I think what was gained coming up was the, from the humility workshop we did just here, was the thing of, the common thread again, the sacrifice, surrender, giving of the self, these saints, giving of themselves for the love of God, and expressing the love of God in their daily lives in very practical ways, and showing, having a desire to show humanity. They are the friends of humanity, so what mastered geniuses, friends of humanity, very much I felt that. And I enjoyed the humanity text. Beyond Words is a very interesting, quite more subtle discussion. From our point of view, we work every day to go beyond words. And, but we have to say a lot of words to go beyond words, we know it anyway. We speak a lot, but we also meditate a lot in silence. So I was disappointed that all the texts spoke really about science that we were working on. And anyhow, thank you, that was my point.
Can you, can you, yeah, just explain Timothy, who was as perplexed as I, why you didn't follow Ralph Cook? Because this is, this is, this is the wrong result.
So I have demerit already, you're like...
I thought if you had demerit, your teacher may have made something if I didn't have it as a wrong teacher.
Actually, that wasn't what the exercise is about for me, I wasn't, it wasn't about, it was about people I was with.
It was about what?
About the people I was working with, with here with. Norman started to smile at me. Relax. So, and I got to my chart, I had to do this later, and this gentleman who disappeared, and he relaxed. And I think it's, it's about, it's not about just the saints and the law of the exercise, it's about the people we're working with. And it's about how we interact with each other. And as an interfaith believer, great believer in interfaith work, we don't care for each other, how can we care for anybody else in the world? How, you know, just hearing the news, just discussing, and I was thinking, are we giving blessings to those souls who committed that act as well as someone who has been killed? Is our generosity, which is a Jewish, I understand generosity and humility, the Jewish, mainly Jewish virtues, are we giving those virtues, that generosity part, to those people perpetrators as well as victims? And I think we was looking at how this is interfering, what happened here with the lovely speeches again, did that interfere with the flow? And I think someone is concluding differently, but you know, we all heard that news. And it must have been reactionary, I think, what was going on. But it's very relevant, we are in the world, we're here doing, in the before your world, in a way. But we're definitely in the before your world. So...
Very good.
Nice, thank you.
And Charlotte, would you like to speak?
I don't know what happens.
Is, is, I'm curious whether the sentiment that Georgina expressed for Cook went across the table or other voices participated?
No, I think we enjoyed it. We spent a lot of time pondering its meaning. I personally felt I'm not capable of evaluating from outside that tradition, whether or not these are religious geniuses. I just had no idea.
Okay, let's move on to the homework.
This is a Tamil text, South Indian text. It's more than a thousand years old. We had one, thankfully, we had one Hindu scholar at the table to explain some of the distinctively Tamil and Hindu appearances in the text. But the surprising thing is that everyone really loved them. And they read these texts as if they were contemporary, with no distance of language, with no separation of time. They read them like contemporary English poetic, you know, like mystical poetic works. And so everyone really took to these texts. And the one thing that really struck me was something that, Kate, good Kate, Kate said, that is that because it came from outside of a tradition, in some ways, it was much easier for you to see the brilliance in it. Because, I mean, maybe, maybe the filters are less school, and less sophisticated, so there's, there's less filtering going on, but others really struck it. You know, our table read these like contemporary mystical poems. And the foreignness of the text just kind of fell away. And...
Told you so.
Yeah. So, do you, do you want to add anything? Your, your, your explanations of the distinctively Hindu portion of the text, I think, were extremely helpful. But I think even had we not had that, it seemed as if the will around the table was still to read these like contemporary English mystical texts from, maybe from the church next door, but, but they didn't seem like they were foreign.
Anything around, anybody want to say about the last night's experience or working with the community?
Well, that was really fun. Really fun. Yeah, and it was great actually covering the different texts on the same theme, but sort of closely aligned, and actually the things you could, I suppose find familiar, or not as the case may be. I think I had the same experience of the public texts, that it was very difficult to...
With Ralph Cook?
Yeah, to get into.
I must, I must say, we worked on it Monday, David Patterson, who really is a great mystic, that was the one text he didn't succeed in aligning to. And I think it's on Monday night, I think it's a difficult text apparently, I, I think I underestimated the difficulty, okay.
I can get it from a democratic perspective, but I couldn't engage with it. It read on the text, I think it didn't.
The text, the text about the commentary on it? Both?
Yes. I didn't write the commentary.
No, this was a very badly written unit, because what happened was the author didn't write it, he let the translator extract pieces. And I have reservations about the unit as such, but I don't have any reservations about Ralph Cook as such. I'm walking away disappointed with Ralph Cook, that I have not succeeded in creating a vehicle for Cook to be better known for these exercises. But you guys still like him, I don't know. You know, you're Jewish.
Tough looking stuff.
Tough looking stuff.
It's tough. I mean, definitely Hebrew, but you know, the translation, I think it's a very tough text for Jews to get. So I don't know if it's, all the words are not for everyone, I was like, it's very tough.
Something I have to take into account. Uh, Kate, so you're, I'm just interested by one thing, and I'm sitting here, and that is that, both for Georgina and for Kate, the experience of reading collections of texts across traditions was more enriching than focusing on one thing. Did I hear you correctly?
It's different.
Yeah.
You're putting away different...
That's why I gave you an answer.
No, no. With this, it's even, it was much more wise comparing yourself in various bits of texts by the same person to have a much greater sense of this type of understanding and thinking about things like genius in this individual. The texts last night, just, I think, were much more, they illuminated better, different approaches to the same concepts, or what we believe to be the same concepts, or how they make differ, or how you might explain them or go about thinking about them.
No, so that's something for that, you know. I think, um, since my experience with texts that I read was, we were trying to jump two steps, at least two steps at once, by presenting three texts from very different traditions. But they're not even strictly focused on the same issue. But I can understand why, by knowing at least a bit about each of the traditions. But I think there needs to be like a more careful choice of texts, where only one variable is allowed to vary at a time. You see what I mean?
Ideally, yes.
So, so that they, they seem to be more closer in topic. Either more closer in topic, or closer in approach. But to vary both at the same time is...
But be grateful you're all in English.
I'm actually grateful.
Okay, we come on to the next table. Who is speaking on behalf of Ruby?
Not, get over it.
We also found that the Ruby was very, seemed very contemporary. It appeared in the translation as if we could be reading some kind of modern English poetry as well. We also really appreciated the down-to-earth, the way in which mystical concepts were related through material metaphors. And we discussed that that was important. And that people who achieve a higher level of mysticism have an important task in lowering themselves back down into the physical world. And we also thought critically about the term religious genius. Because there was something about Ruby which was, um, humanistic and opening up to invite people who maybe aren't religious to join the conversation. And, uh...
Spiritual humanist.
Spiritual humanist.
Uh, so, yeah, so we really decided to reterm him a spiritual humanist as a appropriately an oxymoron. And that was helpful to us in terms of Ruby.
Any further comments about last night?
Talking to a conversation, we also form like friends that, the kind of universality of the kind of message that we give touched upon all of us, particularly the metaphors that we read to you, or from other faith traditions, for instance, the number of passages were about Mary and Jesus, although he was Muslim. So we found a very interesting...
We should position the camera properly. Elliot, do you want to reposition yourself to the right for the next speaker?
I can see perfectly well, unless it's him.
It's him.
Talking heads is bad, talking backs.
Pretend it's me or both. We did Thomas Merton, and I think we all, I think we all did see the potential for him being a genius, religiously, a religious genius. I think mainly, a lot of his thoughts resonated with us in his ability, in his desire for contemplation as a goal, as a goal of prayer. Also, thanks to Ruth. Yeah, to Ruth. A lot for her connection to Murphy, his writings. I guess coincidentally, recently finishing his biography, who he was...
You wrote it or you read it?
I read it. A long time ago.
From here, you never know.
I think mainly, I think we really wanted to do is his ability to be a pioneer as a Christian. He may reference, I think facetiously, to his, his desire to get authority, to get respect of authority in what he was doing. But really what it meant is that he was really more outspoken in what he wanted to do, and to be more interreligious. And he really thought the idea of being interreligious was very important, and being a religious genius, and being universal. And, I forgot what it's over there, but I think that was, yeah, because of the... Yeah, sorry. Yeah, and also his life, his, his own narrative, which we saw that, although he talked a lot about the need for brotherly love, and to be out there and to be compassionate, and to be communal, Ruth informed us that actually he spent the last part of his, the last part of his life for a good chunk of his life as a hermit. So even though he lived in a monastery, he found it was too difficult to actually concentrate. So he thought the desire, and it was important to be there and to share with his brothers in the monastery, but then, as a human, you couldn't, you just couldn't even work them. So the irony of him wanting to show that as part of his faith and his practice to do with people, but the reality of being human and wanting to separate himself. So we thought his, his being human made him more of somebody he actually looked to as being a genius. Because he struggled with that, that tension of isolation and community. And then just quickly, last night, I mean, none of the, none of the people I worked with last night appeared tonight. We went through love. And I think just because there was more people that were less, less confident in their, in their belief of God last night, they would say they're atheists, there was, it was more difficult to, to focus on religious genius for some of the people in our group. Raj is, Raj was here also last night, but some of the students that were there didn't, you know, called us all that, and they didn't relate to it. And I think, I think that's interesting, in that, I think for Jews, when we think of our educators, our rabbis, our sadiq, our saints, even if people that don't believe in God can still feel inspiration through our own teachers. Meaning Jews want to know what Jesus says about life and death and all of these big questions, even if they don't even believe in God. But that didn't transfer to other religious geniuses for our group. So they didn't really want to know as much about what Christian saints said about life and death or love. It was a limit for them, it was not as, I don't know, I don't know why, because I didn't ask that question. But I, when I'm thinking about it now, in the past 24 hours, is that I think they want to know what their culture says about life and death, and that even if they don't believe in God, but it's too much of a bridge for them to want to know what everybody else says about it.
What does it say about the potential audience? Is it a matter of age or a matter of faith, what's the age of people, your students?
Um, you know, eighteen to twenty.
So is it that they're too young, or that this project should be reserved for people with stronger religious identity?
It could be a matter of age that you just may have, but I'm thinking more it's if they believe in God. I think if you're generally spiritual and generally interested in God, then you, you might be more interested in a larger scope of what it is. However, what the, my, my section of Jewish people I worked with are a little more liberal in their thinking. And I think if I work with people that were less liberal, and they're thinking, they'd be more, I would assume they'd be more concerned with looking to the wider scope of interreligiosity.
Can I make, just, can I, I am saying, so, you work with young people, and I was reminded of the debate that we had the other week at Yarlem as well. I mean, particularly young people, there's something in university, and proof people are fine. And being subject to scientific...
Yeah, stick up for the camera.
And being subject to scientific criteria of evidence every day, every minute, every sentence. They don't really understand what we mean by belief. They don't understand that actually encompasses quite a wide range of perceptions and reactions. And that's what we did, we have, that's one of the key elements of some of the problems we have with Judaism at the moment. But aside from that, it's also a problem that we have here. Because we, most of us understand that range of beliefs and mixed up with practices and social circumstances and identifications and loyalties and all this. But young people who've had scientific backgrounds and not reflected on this can't see that you either have to believe in it absolutely and a hundred percent, or you don't, whichever case, you don't care about it anyway. That's putting a break through, I think I made my point.
Thanks. Do you want to say something more?
No, I just did the beginning. It is not Thomas Merton, I don't think, that's the short thing. Maybe what makes me agree that Thomas Merton is a religious genius is that he was talking to religious traditions to which the church was not yet talking to, like Hinduism, Buddhism. In the time where, when, when the church was condemning anybody who was saying anything which was not being safe. But because he was recognized as such, before respecting him, the church was trying to ignore what was happening. Something with the Mother Teresa of Calcutta, you, many people now know that she had problems with her faith and at one point she, she thought she did not have faith, but that part of her life is completely ignored when a judge is talking about her. So those people who, when everybody outside recognizes them as religious geniuses, their own tradition, religious traditions have to accept them in a one way or another, even if they are not completely orthodox. I use the word which is used in our church. Yeah, Thomas Merton was really saying far beyond what the church was even thinking about, to say, but he was still respecting.
Was he actually hundred percent?
Yeah, completely, not even accepted, but nobody mentions that. For example, nobody, almost nobody knows in the church that he was talking to Muslims, but he spent many times, many, many weeks working to pray to Muslims. So that was religious genius.
I just want to say quickly, in connection to what you said about Thomas Merton being somebody who cares for his faith, I think that's something that like, is quite a clear mantra to do, that all these religious geniuses across the traditions is that they are, they're breaking the mold in some kind of way, in all sorts of different kinds of ways, but that's something that they're doing. But to break the mold, they have to start starting their tradition, and have to grow it, and then, you know, having learned from it, to break away from that. And that might perhaps partly explain why when you're talking about the people who are coming from the Jewish culture, they understand why the religious genius in their culture is genius, because they understand why they've broken the mold. But to them, the religious genius of other places is less accessible, because they don't understand what they're... Like, it's not immediately obvious to them what, what kind of genius it means to express for them.
Yeah, I have to amplify what you're not thinking. You understand that?
No, no, sorry, I think that's...
I want to amplify for everyone's sake what Amy said, which I find crucial and important. The whole point about religious geniuses, that we're not only talking about some person who's in sort of divine hour space and, 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 and doing no matter what they're doing, but in some way shaping tradition and contributing to this significant way. And that's almost like the condition, the appreciation, the attention between the universe, the universe. To truly appreciate what a person who's a religious genius does, is got to understand their contribution to a given condition. At the same time, we're also stating that if they're truly a religious genius, then actually there's some universal about their teaching that cuts across. And what Amy just made me realize is there's a built intention in approaching religious genius, where even the same individual who simultaneously allows a reform, transformation, growth in their tradition, and allow that condition potentially to break beyond. And I, and I think that's great work to recognize this dual movement as constitutive of those individuals. Thank you, amen.
Can I, can I just come in on that? Because I think actually, what you're saying there is, the way I look at that is that a religious genius actually has more to say about these words of being a human being than it is about being a religious person. So what they're articulating, what they're describing, what they're embodying is a way of wisdom that actually has something to do with what it means to be a human being than a religious person, I think.
That's interesting, that goes back to your, your group was saying...
Thanks.
That goes, that goes back to what you were saying about talking about you is a spiritual humanist. And that with the, the tension of the relationship between spiritual dimension and human dimension. The problem is, is this could be one, we're, we're struggling to define the category. You could also say that people who are geniuses of interpreting moves within their tradition, or redefining their tradition, and doing the work internally, might be religious geniuses for what they brought to their tradition. Let me, let me, let me put Timothy on the spot here, and ask him to reflect about a case that we had in the collection, but we didn't bring tonight. There was a case of Al Ghazali, who was hugely important in the formation, reformation, recrimination of the Muslim tradition. Could Ghazali also be the kind of humanist whose genius is really talking about something essential to the human being? They're rectifying with what your name is saying? Or could we have a religious genius who's only contributed to the tradition without necessarily developing this universal message that's grounded in the depth of what it means to be human?
The difficulty about Ghazali may be the same difficulty that we had with Ralph Cook. And that is, he was so deeply and thoroughly embedded within his own tradition that you really have to enter into that depth and embeddedness in order to see and appreciate how transformative and how revolutionary, and how brilliant he was in doing what he did. But once we get into the particularity of the situation, right, what we see is, we see a man who was profoundly concerned that his tradition had become overwhelmed by a fetish reform. And that fetish reform ended up leading to a place where there was a crisis for lack of substance. And so Al Ghazali then is celebrated as the great renewer of Islam in his own time, because he was the one who both realized the spiritual crisis of his son and was able to reinfuse the mainstream tradition, right? To reinfuse the mainstream tradition with a very, with a palpable sense of mystical spirituality, sense of God, and a sense of teleology. That this was, religion was about more than law, in fact, the law was not the de los, the law was not the end, that the law itself was a vehicle to help get people to an end which is transcendent and beyond.
Okay, that is the tradition, what does it do to the, that speaks to the human person, such as the Christian person?
So, so once we, once we have a sense of what he's doing, right, we can appreciate the same danger, and the same dynamic, and the same need in other faith traditions. But the, one of the, one of the geniuses of Al Ghazali is that he was able to reinfuse his tradition in a way that didn't seem to the people that he was speaking to to be revolutionary at all. So he was able to sort of cleverly, strategically re-weave that spirituality into the mainstream fabric. And unlike, unlike Ruby, for example, who was a little bit on the, the margins of the mainstream tradition, Al Ghazali was working within a deeply embedded place, as Ralph Cook was.
And so, but let me give you another distinction, Ralph Cook, when done proper... Rav Koke, when done properly, without cynical comments, bad translations, and being read out of context, okay, which I think our friend Georgina was a little bit suffering from. But when done properly, is going to speak ultimately to the human person as a human person, and not only to the Jewish tradition and its evolution, even though he had possibly more than anyone else, three thousand years to say about the Jewish tradition, but there's a deep, there's a going to the heart of the human condition in every word of his, because he's speaking autobiographically. What our friend said about Ruby was just, I believe the conversation we have here, I record off of this table, goes just in that direction. But I think so far, you want to flash on or not?
No, 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 no.
But, okay.
Ten minutes in this room.
But if we were to, if we were to. But listen, I'm not, I don't know, I don't know if all cases that we're looking at religious geniuses, if that's how we should think of them, because the universality of religions needing to be revived is a different kind of universality than the universality of human vision that Matt was talking about. So this is proof of further thought. And if this was your answer, then you need to keep thinking about this issue.
But really, if we were to resort ourselves only to his own biography and his own journey, I think what we have is we have a story of a human being who, with all the worldly success, finds himself lacking something fundamental. And so he leaves his power, he leaves his position, he leaves his love in search of God. And so insofar as we just focused on Al Ghazali's life story, then I think we do have a universal story. We think of Siddhartha Gautama, we think of many others who fled their, the trappings of their worldly existence in order to find something more meaningful.
Thank you, thank you. I want to speak to Maureen and Matt and whoever's speaking. Don't fight about it.
Want me to speak? Ken, would you be so grateful you're on board? And Georgina, come around, go left. Okay, well, we looked at somebody called Amma, who is a Hindu, but a revolutionary woman in that she wanted to overturn all the hierarchies in Hindu worship. So as a completely, the lowest of the low, a low-class woman, she said all these restrictions which are in place about what people can do within this religion and this practice needs to be overturned. So what could she do? She didn't fly around, talk about it for hours on the bar. She went out in the world and set out to put up ashrams where people in need could come, neither food, neither love, neither the hug, actually, that's her main idea. She'd go around the world, helping people, and they seemed to get a lot from it.
For twenty-six hours at a time.
Massa shakti, that is it.
So does this constitute religious genius? Some people think it is, and we've had like criteria for religious geniuses, like being revolutionary, being one's own tradition. So it seems that's her intention, and she succeeded. She's also got herself known in the world as a humanitarian person with no limits. What we read of her spiritual journey, I think, did not actually inspire us to identify her as one of our chosen religious geniuses executed in Europe. Do you think she was or not?
Yes, there's such a discussion about what she had.
Okay, so there we go. One person is convinced, the rest of us, when we actually sat down and thought, what's a religious genius? We didn't identify her, I won't miss what we thought was the characteristics.
No, that's very important.
Are you hoping to?
Absolutely, that's what, totally was the need for this moment.
Okay, I'll let him have it.
I tried to say, kind of identify what we thought the characteristics of a spiritual genius and a religious genius was, and there was a variety of answers, someone who can combine respect through sponsorship of good actions and policies and a generation of negative actions and policies, not corruptible, someone who's strong and compassionate, somebody who's influenced last generations, speaks to traditions other than Rome. We talked about some different examples, a person who can look beyond differences between people with integrity, you know, that what he says and does, for example. I was saying that for me, a religious genius is someone who has the ability to articulate in word or action something that when the hearer hears it, they feel that instinctively and intuitively already know. So they're saying something you hear, you think, well, actually, I feel like at a depth level, I already knew that. And you're helping to articulate an inner experience that I already have. You're introducing a new understanding, helping to enliven an understanding that I already feel that I have.
And all these things, you thought she didn't have?
No, I don't think, well, I wouldn't have put it quite like that.
You didn't thought she had enough of a critical mass to?
Well, I asked everybody who they thought was a religious genius, and.
We had both favored religious.
Listen, I don't think it's her, except.
Well, I would say, as one of the few people in the room who happens to know her, or definitely else knows her, so is the only person in the room who knows her, loves her greatly, I would say the following. If you're talking about great intellectual novelty, nothing another, ingenious in some sense of creativity, then maybe you could say she doesn't fit. I personally have doubt that she should be included in the project. I think Amanda, who prepared the materials on her, did a grain of judgment where she might contribute. If you take Matt's list of descriptors of what, she matches each and single one of them. And if you don't know that, that's because it didn't come from the test, okay?
I think that's it, it's more to do with us perhaps not being, not knowing enough about her, not knowing her well enough.
Yeah, which tells me something about tonight's exercise. In fact, if I look, if I look now at the two exercises we've done, because we've done two exercises, two nights of reading collections of texts and asking, can they inspire across tradition? And one session of trying to draw a portrait. Tell me if I'm wrong, but I get the distinct impression that the exercise of reading comparative sections and drawing inspiration was far more successful than the exercise of focusing on a single, on a single figure. And I think the main reason is the difficulty of concentrating, even though the authors try to make the effort to do so, it's harder to get the full scope of a person over six characters, over a collection of readings like this. We don't really succeed in getting a full enough thing to be inspired. Maybe we need a whole biography, maybe we need to understand the better, we need to delve into the deeper, I don't know what it is. But in terms of, the same amount of text and attention that was paid to collections seems to yield proportionally greater inspiration and admiration in everyone except for those who read poetry. This is how I summarize the evening. The poets had a fantastic time. You guys, you guys were ahead. You were the most successful group, you fired a gigantic conversation. You guys did very well. And this side of the room was struggling throughout the evening. Very interesting experience. They were holistically back there with their difficult texts. These were doing okay, but it was, it was interesting, but I didn't feel like nobody, nobody got excited. You guys were excited, these guys were excited, you guys, okay. So. You were the worst. Not your table, the next table was. So, okay, you can, you can disprove it in a second. If the lessons are true, this says something very important about what's easily and successfully communicable, because we're trying to figure out what speaks to people. Poetry speaks to people, teachings speak to people, a condensed attempt to capture a person may not.
The last thing you said, the most important, is the condensed aspect.
Yeah.
Because actually, for me to read a spiritual biography, to see something embodied in a life, that actually is a very powerful thing, but it takes a little time. You have to take a few weeks to immerse yourself in a biography. You don't make a big impact, whereas poetry is far more immediate. I think that's the difference.
Yeah, I think so. Amy?
I think it's just like what the nature of their spiritual genius is, not what the nature is, but how they express their spiritual genius. So we talked a lot on our table about how we felt that the genius was not the, the reaching, the understanding of God, the reaching enlightenment, of the coming back down to the model and being able to share that with the world, and share it with people who hadn't reached it, like you. And for Ruby, poetry was the way that that was done. But for, I don't know who they were doing that, but whoever, the way it was done is clearly in actions, not in writings. And you said yourself that it's not an academic genius there. So it's not looking at texts, even describing, which is not going to capture the genius in a way that, this is what Ruby did, was like, this is how the genius was expressed was through her poetry.
Yeah. I'd just like to add, one of the things we discussed in the Rumi was that, in, he makes a metaphor out of the read fluke of the soul, but the, he problematizes the listener. The person who, there are people in the poem who are listening to the read fluke, but still only having a superficial experience. They aren't necessarily seeing the deep thing yet, and the reader is yearning to communicate to them. And it's not always communicable. The role of the listener is, you know, the listener has to bring something to the table as well. And it was really important for me in the Rumi that he recognized that. I think one of the difficult things about Amma is that the, it presupposes that everyone is already the right listener. Everyone is going to have the spiritual impact of being hugged by this particular woman in this particular way. And I think what was, what was more impactful for us is that there's something more active about the role of the listener, or the non-genius person who is coming into contact with this. It's incredibly difficult to conceive of a spiritual experience which is immediately completely communicable to all equally, because we feel like it would have kind of just had a massive wave. And actually, there's an important part of mystical spiritual genius is negotiating the process of translation or communication, which is often, which is often very difficult.
There were a few other questions.
Well, you know, the real difficulty, I think, with Al, and I think that Amy were referring to this, is that her text is embraced.
No, no, they were written real texts, they were written real teachings, the teachings were started.
But I think that where she is most transformative, right, is in the physical presence.
It's in the totality of it all.
And teaching. All right, then, I guess my point is rendered irrelevant. But what I was trying to say is, sort of, for me to hear that Amma, for me to hear that Amma is changing one's lives through this embrace, is sort of like for someone to tell me, oh, well, Ruby writes great poetry, right? I can take your word for it, right? But I haven't had a direct experience of Ruby's poetry. Ruby was not known for embracing people. And so one of the difficulties about, for me, and getting at Amma and feeling her profundity, is that her primary medium of transforming people's lives is through this embrace. And that's something that I just hear about. It's like when you speak about, you know, when the people in the Pram Kibari community speak about those moments with Daki, you know, when it's eye to eye and soul to soul, and it's, it's something which requires a physical presence in order for you to really feel the profundity of it. And in the same way, it seems that, that Amma's, you know, her spiritual genius or religious genius really requires almost a personal physical proximity.
To not only get further, let's recognize, you've opened up an interesting typology now of religious geniuses that are dependent on the presence of the person and independent in relation to what their text is.
Yeah, okay.
It's a very fruitful way to continue, but I think Chandra wants to say something.
Yes. To me, a religious genius, whether a poet can be, or a philosopher can be, a humanist, doesn't matter. To me, he needs to fulfill two.
She, he or she.
My goodness, she. Is to fulfill two things, and of course, I bother with this, the role of a teacher is not only to instruct and inform, but to inspire and transform. That to me is a religious genius.
I just wanted to add something about Amma Chi. I was told about Amma Chi at length, to the point that I came out looking for her, because she usually comes to London in October, and I went basically looking for her because I really wanted to have one of these hugs for her. And the person who told me about her is someone I trust, and I believe she did not tell me any more. She described the hug at length, and she said, really, it gives you this experience of belonging to her and to all, there's no division, you know, there aren't just divisions of sex or language, division of country, division of anything like that. So I believe one hundred percent in her, even though I have not as yet met her, I believe in her. When I went to go the video of her speaking, and when I saw the video, I thought, yes, that is the thought that formed her, she is real. And I mean, like, I don't need to defend her because, you know, what she does, but for the fact, I believe she is genuine.
Let's move to the thirty-second segment, as part of preparing the fifteen, the five-second segment, and then we exchange the lights. The thirty-second segment part, anybody wants, what have you been inspired through these last few days in the exercises? What's inspired you? You don't have to answer it. If you feel like you've been inspired by someone, something, some idea, please share it with us.
I was just inspired by what you said. And I think that there's something about the, I think it's interesting, because we've only female religious persons that has been discussed, and that there is something interesting about the notion of the embrace, the physicality of it. And Thomas Merton, whom I admire very much, and I must say, going back to the whole idea of the biography and the spiritual struggle, the best thing is to read the seventy-story mountain, just to see what he goes through. All we've got here is the end product, it's very abstract. It's the passion of the transformation, the story of his life, and the bitterness of his childhood is actually in some ways much more interesting. And it's, I think that sometimes what you were saying about the poetry again, is that it's about how that's rendered into human terms, and so the embrace toward everyday life, those are the things.
We're doing thirty seconds. Amy, just a little. Thirty seconds. Anya, whatever you've learned in the course of the last two days, Maureen?
Just really in the discussion tonight, taking up this concept of spiritual genius, I've actually experienced us going beyond our boundaries in the discussion. So there's something about the nature of this which has lifted us beyond that particularity of our text.
Well, I need this for PR purposes, you can do it in thirty seconds. How do we put this up, Bianca?
I felt that we were talking about something that was outside, transcending those boundaries, and just transcending what we know, but we were feeling something more that was in a sense common to all of us, something we wanted to know about. I don't know how else to express it, but it felt like a very crafty conversation.
Thank you. Gustav?
Yeah, I probably not say again what I've been saying, but to add one thing from what you just said, I thought that to recognize somebody as a religious genius also requires some kind of faith. Some people might struggle to even, to open themselves to having an idea of somebody going beyond their tradition. Or some might go there slowly. So it also requires some level of faith to accept somebody as religious genius outside their tradition. I think those.
But back to what Daniel said, that students have trouble. They lack faith, they couldn't discover faith in anyone else. We had testimony the entire evening that went down there. And yet Gustav, you yourself said that you have this atheist friend who loves Radha, you are a tenth-century, you know, eighth-century mystic, you know, from Baghdad. So there's a paradox here. Sometimes a heart can be touched without faith, and sometimes not. It's not so easily said, I think. Okay, thirty seconds, what's inspired you, anyone else? That's it? Such a dry evening.
I think it's something about connectedness, I think that's why the poetry works.
Say it again?
It's about feeling connected, I think that's why.
It's about feeling connected, I think that's why the poetry works. Those guys that have poetry, it looks that much easier to.
Our connectedness.
And it's all, two or three actions, it's connectedness with the text and the connectedness with us all here. It's actually very important.
Anyone else? Okay, the 10-second segment before we close. What advice or suggestions do you have as far as insight and next steps for the Religious Genius Project? Anybody have anything to say about religious genius?
In the path, down the road.
No, you have to be open and the universal truth, that's the main thing. You mean, the open what?
Openness and the universal truth.
The openness to universal truth. Anyone else who give us advice, next steps for the, anything more you want to say to us about religious genius?
We'll concentrate on what we're ready to editing.
You can do the spread.
Easy. And I would just like to speak on behalf of Dr. Ramsey. He very much likes the title of Religious Genius. So I would like to, I want to thank everybody who has invested. First and foremost, everyone who came, took the time. I know a lot of you were waiting around for us to come to Oxford and take more of your time. So thank you for making me available. Thank you to Elliot for filming. Thank you to the staff here in Buck Hall. Most unbelievable thanks to Charlotte. With the help of Amy, we've all been willing to help to produce these three evenings for which we will remain. I want to say forever grateful that it's been a long time, that's waiting for a very, very long time.